Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 25th meeting of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland. The time is now 6:00 PM. I now call the meeting to order. We will now have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Keith Sidnor.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Here.
President Clark?
Here.
Mayor Sidnor?
Here.
You have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Moving to Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of the Minutes from our January 6, 2025, and January 13, 2025 meetings. Hopefully, everyone has had the opportunity to review recent minutes. If there are no suggested edits or objections, I will now entertain a motion to approve said minutes.
Madam President, I move to approve the minutes as prepared.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to Agenda Item Number Five, Report of the Mayor and City Council. This evening, we will begin with Council Pro Tem Jeffrey Mills.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone here tonight. The first I would like to give honors, today is the anniversary of my mother's birth, I'm sorry, of her death. That's how messed up I am today. And so, been trying to get over this day. And but Gloria Mills was a good woman, and I truly appreciated her, and I keep my prayers, and please keep your prayers for my family. And moving forward, on January 16, I was at the Laurel High School Career Day, Career in College Day, and I have to say, this was one of the best ones I've ever been to, and I've been to a lot of them. And they had, there were so many vendors there for all types of careers, and one of the ones that stood out to me was the Fire Department right here in the EMS. We have to, it's a need right now, if you don't know, that we need to do all that we can to support them. This is Station 10, and they need our help. And so, that's why, it was great to see the recruiter at the high school, and her name, I think her name was Ms. Pat, did a heck of a job, you know, talking to the children there, and I think she got about 20 of them signed up. And I would say, if you all have anyone that's interested in joining EMS or Fire Department, they just have to be at the age of 16. The, on January 21, I was at the Firehouse 10, giving a proclamation with the Council President, and that was pretty good, just to be able to step foot inside there. That was my first time actually being in the Fire Department, and so I'm wishing to do a tour there, and perhaps the council members would join me. And if some of you all constituents that have not been in this station here, I would advise you all to come and join the tour, you know, because it doesn't make sense for us to be right here in this neck of the woods and not be familiar. So let's get familiar, and let's give support to them. And that is my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Next, we will have Councilmember James Cole.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Starting my report two weeks ago, I attended the MML Caucus Meeting for the Board of Directors that I sit on. On the 18th of January, I assisted Laurel for Pawtucket. We were fixing some of the protective tree cages that go around the 70 new trees that we planted in Riverfront Park two years ago. Also, on the 18th, I attended the city's Health Fair. It was a great turnout. I did want to extend my congratulations to everyone involved. I've heard nothing but positive feedback for everyone that attended the fair. Hopefully, next year, as the fair continues, we get an even bigger turnout. Last week, I officially signed on to the Coalition to Support the Prince George's County and Fire EMS for reforms to the volunteer and paid fire services here in the county. I also attended the Finance Administration and Intergovernment Relations Committee Meeting for the National League of Cities last week. One of the main topics at our meeting was Congress is currently looking to remove the tax-exempt status from municipal bonds. What this means is, if they remove that tax-exempt status, investors will have to pay income tax on all of the gains they get from that. When that happens, we as municipalities, whether it's the county or the city, are going to have to pay more in interest rates. We typically save 1.5% in interest rates for every dollar that we borrow. So last year, we did buy a municipal bond. This will significantly impact the city as we go forward, potentially increasing taxes to residents. So I did, one of the things that the committee works on, there's a draft resolution that I helped put together that is for us as a council to declare our support for tax-exempt status for municipal bonds that would be sent to all of our congressional delegation from the state of Maryland. I've drafted that and submitted it to President Clark. I'm looking forward to seeing that on a future agenda. Yesterday, the 20th, I attended the Laurel Historical Society Volunteer Appreciation Event. Thank you to all the volunteers from the Historical Society that continue their work, and congratulations to all of the members. Some of the members were awarded yesterday for 45 years of service at the Historical Society. And then I wrapped up my day yesterday, helping wreaths across America, remove all the wreaths and stands that we put on Ivy Hill Cemetery. I talked to the organizer there. It's important that everybody remembers after we put them out that we need to clean them back up. So we were there for a few hours, but the cemetery is looking good again. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Next, we have Councilmember Adrian Simmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So, pleasure to be with everybody in person again today. I think this is our first in-person meeting since the end of November, so it's a pleasure to see everybody here this evening. About two weeks ago, I was in Annapolis, meeting with members of our state delegation. I was there with my other hat on, my CPA hat, there advocating for regulatory and a positive regulatory and tax environment for all the small businesses and individuals that accountants serve throughout the state. So it was a pleasure to be able to meet with the delegate layman's office, also with representatives from Delegate Penny Melnick's office, and we released some information with Delegate Barnes and Senator Rosa Pepp's office. So it is something, as I've brought up a couple times already, this year, this year's legislative session down in Annapolis is going to be very active, so I encourage folks to stay connected, because what happens there is definitely going to impact us as residents of the state. Oh, one thing I wanted to mention, while I was there, I got to meet with another CPA from District 21, Maxine Bardwell, who, as I learned, is a resident here of the city of Laurel. And not only is she the incoming president for the Maryland Association of CPAs, she also serves on our Laurel Ethics Commission. And to me, it was such an awesome testament to just the talent we have here in Laurel that's really influencing throughout the state of Maryland, so it was just another great example of that. I was pleased also to be with the city when we commemorated Martin Luther King Day on January 17 with the wreath laying. And for me, it was really important that we keep Dr. King's words living in our hearts. It's not something that just is one and done. It's something that's really important for us, because the seeds of separation breed fresh in every generation. And so it's upon us to be vigilant, to be sure to root them out wherever we find them. So I'm glad that we were able, as a city, to sort of commemorate and to recognize that. And thank you for all those who helped organize. This past week, like probably many families around the area, we picked up a little bit of a bug, and so thankfully, I'm three or four days well, but having the kids at home and my wife, who's recovering as well, has kept me from a couple other activities around the city, but it's been great to see a number of the great events that have been hosted by the city. There were no historic district commission meetings this month, because there's no applications, but I did want to share, I recently posted to my blog, Adrian for Laurel, about the efforts the city is now doing to preserve the historic dam down on the Pawtucket River. And some people may know that the city of Laurel itself, in some ways, sprang from the river. It was in the mill that was created on the river in 1811, that grew in 1845, that created 700 people in this area, originally known as Laurel Factory, that in 1870 became the city of Laurel, which is now 155 years old as we get to April of this year. So really awesome, through our state delegation, our federal delegation, we have a lot of funds to be able to protect that, to expand the historical markers that are there, expand also access of people to be able to get down there. So look for that to happen over the next year or two, and if you're curious to read up a little bit more, please visit my blog, adrianforlaurel.org. Looking forward, small businesses, please come tomorrow night, January 28. The Laurel Board of Trade is hosting the Small Business Roundtable here. As many of you know, small businesses, myself, being a small business on Main Street are near and dear to my heart, that's a great way to meet the directors here, to sort of learn about the resources that are available to small businesses, and I will be here as well. I want to hear from small business owners to know what's going to help them and what we continue to do to cultivate an environment to encourage them to be here. So that's tomorrow night. Later this week, on the 30th, we've got a little bit of a doubleheader. The county executive is having a candidate forum at the Laurel Boys and Girls Club at 6:30 to 8:30. So, you know, we have a special primary and general election coming up, so I encourage you to come out, and they're going to be in our backyard, so let's come out and say hi. Doors open at 6, and sort of help cast your vote. That night, the city is also launching its Sustainable Plan, so tough decision where you want to head there, but just to let you know. And I will leave it there. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. We now have Councilwoman Christine Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. Like everyone said, good evening, everyone. My report is as follows. Since our last meeting, I did have a chance to participate, like you had mentioned, the wreath laying and Day of Service for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and the city's Health Fair, which were both well-attended. Today, I had a very good opportunity to drop off the care packages that were put together during that event over to the University of Maryland Oncology Center. It was great to not actually do the work, but then see how it's going to help the people in the community, and the center was very thankful and grateful of everything that we were able to, the community brought together to present to them. It was a wonderful feeling to be able to do that for them. I look forward to, as Councilmember Simmons mentioned, the Third Annual Laurel Board of Trade Business Roundtable tomorrow. Also, on the 30th, as you mentioned, it's pretty busy, but during the afternoon, I will attend the state of Maryland's Developmental Disabilities Administration Community Meeting, and that is the main state agency that pays for services and communities for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So there, I'm just planning on getting information so I can share with our current committee and to make our residents aware and be able to take advantage of the information and resources provided by the state of Maryland. In addition, like you mentioned, I will be attending in the evening the Sustainability Plan that's going to be held here. I plan on promoting literacy and reading to the students at Laurel Elementary School on February the 5th, and attending the upcoming Black History Month program on February the 8th, which I'm sure Council President Clark will share more details about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. For my report, I will actually post my attended events, council collaborations, and leadership opportunities on my social media pages, @KylaClarkForLaurel tonight, for you to view, but today I wanted to use my time a little differently by sharing that in the recent weeks, there has been an understanding of what makes America community strong again. However, in Laurel, I've seen that our differences are not our divisions. They are the very fabric that makes our community resilient and vibrant. Our city's success story is written in many languages, celebrated in various traditions, and enriched by the diverse perspectives of our residents. When we look at our thriving local businesses on our beloved Main Street and throughout Laurel, we see restaurants offering cuisines from around the world, shops that cater to diverse cultural needs, and enterprises that blend different traditions to create something uniquely Laurel. These businesses don't just contribute to our economic vitality, but they create spaces where our neighbors can learn about and appreciate each other's culture. Our schools have become incubators of global understanding, where children naturally learn to appreciate different perspectives and develop the cultural competency essential for success in today's interconnected world. Our Laurel students will not only graduate better-prepared for the diverse workplaces they will enter, with the emotional intelligence and cross-cultural communication skills that employers increasingly value. I've seen firsthand with our public safety events and initiatives how they have strengthened and built trust across all community segments, because when law enforcement and emergency services reflect and understand our diverse population, they then serve more effectively and build stronger relationships with residents. Our city's civic engagement is constantly enriched by diverse voices in our city committees, neighborhood associations, and community events. Different perspectives lead to more creative problem-solving and better decisions that serve all of our residents. Our cultural celebrations throughout the year, they have become signature events that attract visitors from various municipalities, stimulate our local economy, and create opportunities for genuine connection between neighbors. Looking forward, we must continue to actively nurture this diversity and create something greater than the sum of our parts. Every culture, every tradition, and every perspective in Laurel adds another thread to our beautiful community. It makes it stronger and even more beautiful. So to our Laurel residents, our staff, our friends, and my fellow council members, I ask that you choose strength. I ask that you choose to see our differences not as barriers to overcome, but as assets that we can celebrate. I ask that you choose to build bridges instead of walls and to foster understanding instead of fear. This will help us grow stronger together instead of drifting us apart. To our residents, as your council member, I personally remain committed to policies, initiatives, and representation that supports this vision of unity through diversity, because this is a time where we need elected officials and city leaders that will step up for what's right, not for the glam or to see their name in lights or in the newspaper, but to actually do what they said they would do, leaving the political games behind and serving the American people and community members in the right way. That now concludes my report. Mayor Sidnor, I now open the floor to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate that. I want to acknowledge some special guests in the room before my report. Chief Green from the Prince George County Fire Department, and also the chief from 49 is here as well, along with Deputy Chief as well, and former Councilman President Valerie Nicholas is here as well. Just want to acknowledge them before I get started. On January the 16th, also Principal Dinkins, I got to forget Principal Dinkins. As you know, the city of Laurel has partnership with the Maryland Apprenticeship Program, and that program is pretty much that, it's high school students in the CTE program, Career Technical Education Program, and Laurel High School has many Career Technical Education programs, and the city of Laurel has actually created two job positions for Laurel High School students, one in the IT department and one going to be coming in our DPW, so working in the auto mechanics department. So that program consists of 450 hours the student has to receive, along they go to high school, of course, when they get out of school, they come to work in the city. 450 hours where they're getting paid minimum wages, so you learn what you earn, that's that path for the career readiness, because everybody we know don't want to go to college, or, you know, college is expensive these days. So what we try and do is prepare our young people from high school into the workforce. And so last week, as you can see, Councilwoman President Clark led that event there, along with other councilmen, which showed that we were very important to get our youth involved in every program we possibly can. So that's why, that's why I think Principal Dinkins opened his doors and things of that nature. And January the 17th and 19th, the U.S. Mail Conference, once a year during the winter session, the U.S. Mail from all of the United States come together to learn and network and learn about strategy in each other's community. Our special guest was President Biden. This is the second time I was in the room with President Biden. Last year, I was invited to U.S. Conference of Mail to the White House, and so this year, he came to the Grand Marriott Hotel to give us his final speech, and very inspirational. So thanks, President Biden, for his years of service for our country. On January the 19th, we're in Senator Rosa Pepp's Wonder Brunch, and that's pretty much the Senator Rosa Pepp just come out and just want to thank all the citizens. It wasn't a political event, just acknowledging individuals for the work they've done in the community. So we want to thank Senator Rosa Pepp for opening his doors for us like that. January the 20th was Martin Luther King Day of Service, want to thank Corinne Kobach for leading that ceremony. I also want to thank Councilwoman Johnson, when she was a city employee, she actually started that Martin Luther King Day of Service, so I want to thank you for continuing that and Corinne Kobach for taking the ham and going forward with it. On January 24th, Commander Ilana Gore is the first female commander of Fort Meagre Garrison Company, and she opened the doors up to all the elected officials and stakeholders throughout the community, and county executive from Anarona County, Stuart Pittman, was there. And every time I've been around with a county, Anarona County, because we know that the Laurel racetrack will be closing, and 2026 will be the last race there, and they're going to Baltimore, and so we always tell her that, you know, let Laurel annex that land, you know, so they laugh at me and say they give me the wetlands, you know, you can't do anything with the wetlands. But, so that was Commander Gore. Some announcements, I already made these announcements already, but I'll follow up as well. Tomorrow, January 28, the Board of Trades. We also have an initiative for small businesses inside the city of Laurel. We give you $10,000 to open up a business inside the city of Laurel. So once you open your business, you give it to our ECD Department Director Burrows there, and you're eligible for $10,000. Well, I'm on that one, so also, we got a first-time home buyers program as well, so we'll give you $5,000 if you buy a first-time home buyer in the city of Laurel. And we met with the Secretary of State back in December, the city administrator and I, and we wasn't aware that he said that his state of Maryland would match that. So we'll give you $5,000, and the state of Maryland is going to match another $5,000. So that's $10,000 for anyone to open a home, buy a first-time home buyer inside the city of Laurel. So we're going to pass that along. January the 30th, we mentioned this already, once again, I'll mention it again, Sustainability Plant Lunch Party in the chambers. And February the 6th is Town Hall. That's for you all to come here and listen to, just voice your concerns. On February the 6th, right here, at 6:00 PM, sorry, right here in City Hall, is a listening session. We had one last year, we have another one this year, so we encourage all citizens to come in and just voice your concerns. The budget's coming out, according to our city charter. My administration has to present the budget to the council on May 1st, and the council has 60 days to review the budget, to approve it, and the budget will come out on July 1st, 2025. So just come out, you know, voice your concerns and anything, we're just going to listen to you at this time, and then after we list out your questions and concerns, we'll put a report together between 30 and 60 days where you can understand what's going on. And Councilwoman President Clark will be leading the Black History Program on February the 8th, and I'm going to come down for a proclamation, Madam President, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
As you know, February is Black History Month, and oncology Winston started Black History Month in 1926, the Negro History Week. Then 1976, President Gerald Ford was the first United States President to recognize Black History as a month. As you know, and truly, to understand Black History, you've got to understand Americans and world history, and once you really understand that, you truly understand Black History, you appreciate Black History. But I just want to acknowledge some blacks, some African-American females in this room right here. I want a former councilmember Valerie Nicholas to come forward as well, because the city of Laurel, like you said, has made a lot of history, and so I want to just, instead of reading the proclamation and talking about oncology Winston, we're just going to recognize some Black History in our own city. Councilmember Valerie Nicholas was the first African-American female to be on the Laurel City Council. She served, I don't know how many terms she served, she served a very long time.
Five times.
Five times. And she also was the first African-American female to be the president of the Laurel City Council. So that's another hand clap. And the reason I brought Councilwoman Clark and Councilwoman Johnson up to my side, because these are the first time we had two African-American females serving at the same time on the Laurel City Council. So that's another hand clap. So we got the first African-American female, Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Valerie Nicholas, and y'all two came in at the same time, so I don't know who was second.
That's the first time that's had a black council president and a black mayor?
Yeah. We recognizing you all, you know what I mean? So, Councilwoman, you messing me up. So Councilwoman Clark is the second African-American female to be council president, so that's another hand clap. So I just want to take a moment to, you know, let these people know the history of three African-American females all at the same time in the same room, so I figured that today, since we're recognizing Black History Month, start next week, then, you know, get a group photo of these three African-American females leaders in the city of Laurel, and you guys can switch the proclamation when y'all want to, you know, have it for 15 days, 16 days, whatever case you want.
All right. I'm taking this home, sorry.
Thank you. So I go back and do our announcements now. Okay, Madam President, we have some appointments and some reappointments, so the appointments to the June 10th Committee would be Veronica Martin, Arice Jones, and appointment to the Board of Election Supervisor Naomi McMillan, and a reappointment to the Planning Commission, Honorable Rick Wilson, Will Wetherford, and that's the Planning Commission, and Sean Levine to the Community Redevelopment Authority. So that's the council for appointments of Veronica Martin, Artis Jones, Naomi McMillan, and reappointments to Rick Wilson, Will Wetherford, and Sean Levine to the following committees I read on record.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. May I have a motion from the council to approve the three new appointments and three reappointments as shared by Mayor Sidnor?
I move to approve the appointments and reappointments as requested.
Madam Clerk, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of our committee members. This is the time to hear from you, our community members, for our general public hearing portion. Please know that your voice matters, and we value your input. We encourage you to share your thoughts, concerns, and ideas with us, as they are essential to shaping our work and our city's future. As a reminder, each person has three minutes to speak. Please state your name and the city and street that you live in for the record. I will now open the public hearing at 6:26 PM. First on our list, for the general public hearing, we have Ms. Connie Lucas. Please remember to state your name, your street, and city for the record. And you can press the button on, and it'll, yep, there, you could turn it around, absolutely.
Hello, my name is Connie Lucas, and I live in, on Ward Street, right here in Laurel. We do get the Laurel Independent, and I would appreciate the police notice to be enlarged and the streets put on the police report. I believe this would take a lot of hours off of everybody, having to go on the I believe this would take a lot of hours off of everybody having to go on the internet to find it, or going to the police station and taking their time to find the streets that incidents happen on. I think that this would give everyone in Laurel a little added security that you would be aware of things that are going on in our neighborhoods, and we would be a little more enabled to be aware of our security or our surroundings. And I think that the Laurel Independent pages of the City of Laurel could enlarge the police report, and I thank you very much for taking me into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Next on the list, we have, just to clarify, there's Norde Watson. You didn't put a number down. Were you looking to speak for the general public hearing or something specific? Number seven, number eight? No? 174? Okay, all right. Next, we will have Ms. Shannon Mouton. Thank you. I feel like I didn't say it right. Please tell me. I did? Oh, I'm so excited. Okay. Do I have to push a button?
You should not. Good evening. My name is Shannon Mouton. I serve as the Executive Director for Laurel Advocacy and Referral Services at 311 Laurel Avenue, Laurel, Maryland. I thank you for this time this evening. I'm here on behalf of the citizens of Laurel, the men and women who work at Lars, as well as the clients that we serve that actually are in all three Laurels, Laurel Prince George's, Laurel Anarondo, and Laurel Howard County, to present, I'm giving it to the mayor, but it's for the entire council and for the City of Laurel for your steadfast support of us at our 20th Annual Race Against Hunger: The Turkey Trot. So I'm not sure how you want.
We'll come down.
Okay. I think I am.
Can I just a little bit?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mouton. We appreciate you coming to the meeting today and all of the work that you do for the community. Next on the list for the general public hearing, we have Linda Carpenter-Grantham.
I really just came to say, to really introduce myself and along with my son Eric, to say thank you. My son Eric is highly functioning autistic. He's 20 years old. I'm going to really try to rush this in for three minutes, but it's a big story. And when I realized that I had an African-American son with an invisible disability, should he be stopped by law enforcement, what could possibly happen and not turn out well? So I had a conversation with Eric that I felt that he could comprehend on what to do should he be stopped by law enforcement. And I told him, put your hands up, don't reach for your phone, that could become dangerous. Yell out, I have autism. Yell out, someone call my mom and yell out my number. Eric started to cry. He said, Mom, I could do that, but the police would shoot my friends that have autism, because they all respond differently on the spectrum. So Eric came up with this idea. First of all, he loves God and he loves politics. And he came up with this idea. He said, Mom, I have an idea. I would like to put something on the driver's licenses or IDs that would keep me and my friends safe should we be stopped by law enforcement. So he came up with this idea on this dummy ID where you see autistic is what he would like to get put on the driver's license, or mental health, where you see the head, hearing impaired, and the butterfly for all hidden disabilities. And so we met with our Maryland State Senator Will C. Smith, who has written the bill. The Delegate Janelle Wilkins and Delegate Kim Taylor are the sponsors for the bill on the House side, and now we have a number for that bill, which is 0707, that just came out on Friday. But I really just came to say thank you and ask for your support, which I know that most of you have given, and we say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. One of the things that we've learned about this bill is that it is some division there. There are certain groups in the state of Maryland that are not of color who have tried to stop this bill from happening. I don't teach my son to see color. I teach him God's word, love thy neighbor. That means everybody, regardless of what color, your sex, whatever your decision is, whatever, love each other. And so when this happened, it was very hurtful, and I tried to teach my son that, still love each other, regardless of what happens. But we really just came to say thank you, and we would appreciate your support when we have the hearing. We don't have a hearing date as of yet, and after being on the Sherry Shepherd and The View and gaining over a million views and comments, we are now going to Congress to make this a federal bill as well, where we hope to get it passed first in the state of Maryland. So I just came to say thank you so much for your letter, sir, of support and for all of your support. We say thank you. And now my son will come up and have his three minutes.
Thank you.
Please welcome Eric.
Yes, we now have Eric Grantham.
My, my name is Eric Bless Carbon, the Grantham, 20 years old, and I have highly functioning autism. Since the death of George Floyd, my mom had a talk with me again and stopped by the police. She told me, she told me to put my hands up and call out my name and her phone number and yell, I have autism, because the first thing I would do is reach for my gun and the police would think, I mean, reach for my phone, excuse me.
I have a gun.
I don't have a gun, excuse me. Lord Jesus. The reach, the reach for my phone, and the police would think I'm reaching for a gun. There we go. I was concerned for, not only for me, but my friends who have autism like me, but in different ways. I was scared that they would, they would shoot them or hurt them, and they would not know they have autism, which is a hidden disability. The police cannot see it, and neither can others. I'm concerned by one of my friends who have autism, because he walks his dog, and the police will ever stop him, they, he will hide or, or run behind the tree. They will not know he have autism. I'm concerned by my other friends, because some of them got ADHD, and some of them have his sensory issues, and some of them do not like to be touched. Some of them like to walk all the time and cannot keep still. This is why I made Eric's ID law, because the police are first responder to see a person with a logo or a code on their ID, knowing they have a hidden disability, they will know how to communicate with the person with a hidden disability instead of hurrying them. Luckily, Eric's ID law was written by our, our State Senator Will C. Smith for District 20. We have our test file on July 5th, 2024 of last year, which will turn out for the bill. Said, like my mom said, did not get passed. This year, we have two sponsors for the Maryland House of Delegate, Delegate Janelle Wilkins for District 20, the Chairwoman of the Legislature Black Caucus of Maryland, and Delegate Kim Taylor, District 23. We hoping to get this bill passed this year in 2025, and according to my research, already, already 20, 20 states that already have this. Since me and my mom been on national TV with Ms. Whoopi Goldberg on The View and The Sherry Shepherd, we have gained national attention. And since we've been on national attention, so many people have contacted me and my mom to make Eric's ID law a federal law instead of a state law. We appreciate your support to help save lives like me who have a hidden disability and, and support Eric's ID law. Thank you all for your support for Eric's ID law, and, and God bless you all, and thank you for having me. And I would like to thank Mr. Mark Mitchell and his mother for their support for Eric's ID law, and thank you for the State of Maryland for their support for Eric's ID law as always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. I want to let you know, like you said before, this is Mayor and City Council. We all sent a letter to our Senator Roosevelt, District 21, in supporting the passing of that bill. So you have the support from the City of Laurel and the leadership of the City of Laurel, along with our police department. So thank you as well.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, as Mayor Sidnor said, we actually just talked about you this morning, so I was very excited to hear about you. I'm on the PGCM legislative committee, and I know that it's with Delegate Wilkins and that we're looking to, I think it's in the process of getting assigned a number right now?
Yes.
And so we're waiting for that, but thank you for coming today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your support.
Next on our list, we have a former, former council president, Ms. Valerie Nicholas.
I feel really funny, because I'm used to sitting up there. So me and you have my support too. Whatever.
Councilwoman Nicholas, you're going to speak on the other bill. You're going to speak on 174.
Oh, so I'm not speaking on this one?
Yeah, the public hearing, yeah.
Okay.
We have you down, we have you down for number seven, which is general public, but we can move you to?
Yeah, she's speaking on that one.
Yep, it's no problem.
Okay, so I could stay?
He wants you to, Mayor Sidnor would like.
When they call for the, the hearing on that 174, you can come up down.
Okay, don't come for this one, okay.
Next on our list, we have for the general public hearing signed up, Ms. Danielle Miller. Thank you. Just as a reminder, please state your name and the street and city that you live in for the record. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Danielle Carter Miller. I just got married, and I'm a council member in the City of Mount Rainier. Before that, I was an EMS only volunteer here in Prince George's County Fire Department. In fact, EMS services is the reason I moved from my home state of North Carolina to the state of Maryland 14 years ago this month. In early June of this year, the fire chief sent out letters to the volunteer fire departments around the county notifying them that the career staff in their station would be removed or severely reduced. At Station 55 in Mount Rainier in Brentwood, we lost all of our staff except for a part-time ambulance that was originally to be there 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, but after a few phone calls and some considerations, that window was extended to 11:00 PM. But that still left our community without fire suppression and 24-hour ambulance coverage. After experiencing two high-profile deaths, the county decided to send fire suppression and a 24-hour ambulance back to our station. But that did not restore service to the other stations, essentially leaving them all vulnerable the same as we had been. At the start of every shift, according to reports that I have heard, the Prince George's County Fire and EMS Services starts with 25 men short. I will tell you that as a first responder, we do not have a problem doing overtime, but every man has their limits. This is a very large problem that is not just affecting the communities that we are seeing the shortage in our stations, but the greater county as well. When a call comes out to an area that doesn't have staff at their station, they call in the closest station that the units have available. That means that the entirely, that means it is entirely possible that a unit from Laurel will end up in Bowie and maybe even Capitol Heights to answer a call, essentially leaving a void here in your town. Sadly, the county has also neglected their relationship with the volunteers who have served this county for over 100 years, to the point where their station's struggling not only to find and retain members, but to fix and replace their engines and ambulances. These are men and women who the county relies on when the career services are unable to respond, but if they are unable to. The county is also using units from Montgomery County to answer calls, which also leaves areas of Montgomery County uncovered. So you see, this is not just a local problem, this is a systemic issue that is affecting our neighborhood cities and counties. The Coalition to Support Prince George's County Fire and EMS Services is made up of elected officials, career and volunteer Fire and EMS service members, and engaging residents in an attempt to bring about comprehensive change to our county services that will benefit not only our individual municipalities, but their surrounding communities and even neighboring counties. We have written a letter and compiled a list of changes we feel are needed in order to restore the Fire and EMS Services in our county to the level that not only we expect, but our residents and constituents deserve. We humbly ask that the council consider the email and list that we sent to each of you, and ultimately decide to join in with other municipalities and leaders to sign on, either collectively or individually, so that when we submit the letter to the candidates for county executive, it is seen as one of, if not the, most important issue of this race and the winner's term in office. We are available to take questions either tonight here now, or via email, or by phone. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Miller. We appreciate you coming. Let's try to restart this. Give me a second. All right. Perfect. Next on our list, we have Stefan, is it Legan? Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Stefan Legan. I'm from the town of Brentwood. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm just going to underline a couple key points that Danielle Carter mentioned. I am part of the Coalition to Support Prince George's County Fire and EMS. It's a unique coalition, because we're nonpartisan, and we're not endorsing anybody. When we created this coalition, we started with a series of workshops that included a lot of people, including Assistant Fire Chief Green, I'm, I'm sorry, Assistant Fire Chief White, municipal leaders, volunteers, career firefighters, and residents of Prince George's County. The reason why we've created this coalition is because we think it's a core responsibility of whomever the next county executive is, to address the systemic problems inside the Prince George's County Fire and EMS Services. And we're here tonight asking for your support, asking for you to sign our six recommendations, which are very common sense, and sort of elevate, shall we say, the conversation surrounding Fire and EMS Services in Prince George's County. We've already had a few folks sign on, a few municipalities. We've had the PGC Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association sign on, which represents 1,600 volunteers in our county. And to be quite frank with you, the more folks we have sign on, the more powerful our message is. And the message itself is not, and by the message itself, I mean the six recommendations, is not really the message. The message is, there's systematic changes that need to take place in the PGC Fire and Rescue System. And so we're hoping that, if you haven't already received the email, that you'll review what came in a week or two ago, and take a look at the recommendations and consider putting your, your name as one of the undersigned. The special election for county council is fast approaching. We know the primary is essentially the election on March 4th. And as a result, we have this really unique opportunity to make the issues plaguing the fire department a central part of this election cycle. And now is the time that I'm encouraging you to lift up the discussion and encourage the candidates who are running, and it doesn't matter who you're going to be rallying for, encourage them to adopt measures that systematically improve the system, career and volunteer. So we have to run off to a couple other municipalities to give our pitch, otherwise we'd stick around. But please feel free to email, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming today. We appreciate it. If you have anything to submit to our clerk, please feel free to do so. Just going to take a moment to see if we can reset the microphone, so at least everyone knows what the countdown is.
Bluetooth has disconnected. Bluetooth disconnected.
Thank you to our communications department for fixing that. We appreciate it. Next on our list, we have Roy Smith II.
Speaking on?
Oh, they're speaking, okay. I believe you're speaking on number eight, according to the mayor. All right. Ms. Georgina Ifill for the general public hearing portion? As, okay. Just again, as a reminder, just please state your name and the street and city that you live in for the record. Thank you so much. And if you press the red button, just to make sure it's on. Thank you.
Okay, it's on. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Georgina Ifill. I resided 8231 Northlake Court in Laurel, Maryland. I would like to take the time right now to thank you guys for bringing in Linda and her son Eric. I know I have bombarded a few of you with emails from the first moment that I met the two of them about a year ago at an, in a ACP event, and I was so taken by Eric after he spoke and exactly what he was, you know, the laws that he was trying to put in place and what he was trying to do, that I stayed behind to meet up with him and his mom. And it just so happened, he wanted to meet my son, Martin, because he had spoken on his behalf at some other event. So we, we got the two of them together, and since then, we've been very supportive. So I appreciate you guys for bringing them out this evening. We will continue to work and support them on getting Eric's ID law passed this April, this session, and we're going to be encouraging Laurel residents to come out to the library. We're trying to set up something next month where you can meet a little bit more of the Laurel residents. We're also going to be trying to make sure that we have representation down there when the hearing takes place. So again, we plan to support. And just so you guys know, Eric was just recognized this past weekend in the state of New York. He received the Beacon Award from the Ellis Island Honor Society. And this award is given to young minorities who use their life to impact change in the world. And so, that is definitely what Eric has done, continued to do, with the support of others, and I think his biggest supporter, his mom Linda. So, congratulations on all your accomplishments, Eric. And again, we continue to stand behind you.
Thank you, Georgina. Thank you so much for all your support. Oh, my God. Thank you so much. We appreciate you guys. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next on our list, we have Ms. Tiffany Green, Chief Green.
Uh-oh, my time is already ticking. Uh-oh, oh, no. Well, good evening, and thank you for being here. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to address the group, to talk about what I believe is the best Fire and EMS department in the world. While I appreciate the comments made by Ms. Carter, no one from that coalition has ever reached out to the office of the fire chief, which I find so ironic, that we are providing recommendations when no one asked me, as a subject matter expert, what we can do to make our department better. So, in the three minutes here, I want to address just a few of those things there, and then I have two other people that will talk about some other things. One of their concerns is onboarding and background requirements. I live in this county, and I'm committed to ensuring that the safety and well-being of our community is upheld. As such, we have a background process. We are entrusted with people's lives and their belongings. The background process is very similar for both groups, sworn and volunteers. To address the speed and efficiency of it, this year, we hired a full-time background investigator for our volunteers. That has taken the onboarding process from eight to 10 weeks to two to three. We have also hired a full-time recruiter that works with each volunteer corporation and provides monthly meetings to reduce barriers and make the process faster. We've also implemented an applicant tracking system that allows us to see where the applicants are in the process. The Fire and EMS Department has also hired a temporary employee to complete fingerprints. My point is, we've done a lot of different things in recruitment and background to make sure the process is more efficient. One of their other concerns was the Fire Academy's recruitment process and requirements. The Fire and EMS Department continuously looks for ways to improve recruitment, onboarding, and training. This year alone, we have decided to move our candidate physical agility test to the back of the process, to allow for a faster process. We've also extended our recruit school from eight hours to 10-hour days. That has cut our recruit school down by two months. Additionally, certain coursework that could be taught at the later time in the year has been taught further on and allowed two to five weeks' time off of our recruit school. They also wanted us to establish a task force for efficiency in recruitment. The Fire and EMS Department has hired a consultant, Fitch and Associates, to assist with strategic planning. This includes a staffing assessment, which has been used to inform the department's hiring process and resource allocations. We recently just hired a marketing and recruitment firm that has helped with our recruitment and retention for both our sworn and our volunteers. This year alone, we had our application open for 1,200 applicants. From that, 800 have been referred to our background process, and we currently have seven people in the background process. We are seeing positive returns. In closing, this is a dynamic department that is changing and evolving as our county is. We need more staffing and volunteers, and we are actively working to make those things happen while moving forward as a department. PGFD is not the same department as it was 10 years ago, and as a result, we can't continue to do the same things we used to do. We have to recruit and train differently. We have to manage our funding differently, and we have to serve differently. Thank you for your time, and as I've always said, we welcome suggestions, input, and assistance from our community. We're just asking to be at the table. We have the facts and the data that we want to share with the recommendations, because some of those things are either already being done, or we've already tried them. So again, we welcome the input from Ms. Carter. We just want to be at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Green, for your time today.
No questions, you guys have to.
Thank you. Next on our list, we have Assistant Fire Chief Michael White. Hello.
Good evening. My name is... Member of the department, both as a volunteer and as a career member. I currently oversee the Volunteer Services Office, which provides administrative support to over 35 volunteer corporations here in Prince George's County. Throughout 2024, we've significantly enhanced training opportunities for our volunteers. After 31 years of, our training standards were changed, and we aligned those training standards requirements with those of our sworn members, whose training standards are looked at on a biannual basis. Although numerous classes were offered, a few sessions were canceled due to insufficient participation. Our commitment to enhancing accessibility to these training opportunities remains steadfast to provide night, weekend, and varying schedules for our volunteer members. We have partnered with the Bucks County Community College in Pennsylvania to deliver online training programs. We will, and we also continue to work with the Merlin Fire and Rescue Institute, also known as MEMFRE, you'll hear that later on, to provide our free training to our volunteers here in Prince George's County, and throughout the state. They're all over the state. For 2025, we have proposed a series of educational courses with the Fire and EMS Training and Leadership Academy, also with MEMFRE, covering hazmat operations, fire officer training, and EMT V refresher classes, which are mandatory for all of our EMTs in Prince George's County every three years. All proposed classes will support the next phase of the volunteer training standards, which will take effect on Tuesday, July 1st, in 2025. The Prince George's County Fire and EMS Department boasts 348 highly-trained and eligible volunteer officers from our volunteer force, out of a current roster of 950 volunteers at varying levels. They're all ready to handle emergencies and ample, and provide ample leadership and expertise. The Fire and EMS Department has made funding available to all volunteer stations in the county, including primary insurance premiums for apparatus and buildings, fuel and maintenance for all fire apparatus, and most volunteer-owned EMS units, small tool funds, office of central services, warehouse supplies, voluntary service enhancement incentive funds, and uniform funds, and last but not least, station management funding. Station management funding amounts are allocated based on participation, specifically availability for service times. In July of 2022, our funding model transitioned to one that incentivizes service delivery. Previous, previously funding for volunteer corporations were distributed equally irrespective of service delivery levels. The current system rewards stations based on active participation and service availability. The Fire and EMS Department is dedicated to eliminating known barriers to volunteer corporations by providing improved training and equitable funding distribution, so. That's my time.
Thank you so much for your time today. We appreciate it. If you have anything that you would like to give to the clerk, you can as well.
I think she provided it.
Thank you. Let's see if we can restart that. All right, perfect. Next on our list, we have Deputy Fire Chief James, I think it says McClelland? Okay, perfect.
Good evening. As mentioned, my name is James McCollum, Deputy Fire Chief that oversees emergency services for the Prince George's County Fire and EMS Department. I know, just mentioned a little while ago, talking about adequate coverage and response times. To be honest, one of the areas that probably kept me and Chief Green up at night was the city of Laurel. For the past several years, we've had a gap in service. It was probably, probably one of the most exciting moments in my 24-year career with the department, putting 24/7 coverage at Station 810, which started December 29th. Since then, the department has taken over 580 runs, three working fires unfortunately to report. One of those fires resulted in a line-of-duty death of a Montgomery County firefighter. What has this done? It was mentioned that we rely on mutual aid partners. The National Capital Region does work with our partners, and we have mutual aid, automatic response policies, and agreements. We have those with Montgomery, Anne Rundle, Howard, the district, and several Northern Virginia departments. They have been in place for well over a decade. We support each other. Reason? To ensure that the citizens are provided adequate coverage in a responsible time that is acceptable to the standard. At times in the city of Laurel, you'll see fire trucks from Montgomery, Anne Rundle, and Howard, and you'll wonder why. Somebody asked me, I saw the ladder truck from Montgomery County where the line-of-duty death occurred. If we had every fire truck still staffed in the city of Laurel, that ladder truck would still be on the call because of its close proximity to the city of Laurel. So, I want people to understand that we send the resources that are close to you, and that could mean another fire truck from another county. I will say that we have reduced the number of dependency on our mutual aid partners. Just in 24 months, Montgomery County came to Prince George's County over 10,000 times. Prince George's went to Montgomery a little over 4,000 times. We are starting to see those numbers reduce. We still have a lot of work to do, but we are gradually making those steps. To get there, our most number-one resource is our people. That's career and volunteer members. So, as we recruit and bolster our numbers up on both sides, we'll be able to provide that adequate service to the citizens of Prince George's County and the city of Laurel. If you have any questions, I'll be in the back of the room. I'm always available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deputy Fire Chief. It looks like we have completed everyone that signed up for the general public hearing portion. Is there anyone that still wished to speak for the general public hearing portion? I know you may be signed up for additional agenda items, and those are coming, but is there anyone else? We want to make sure that you're not missed. No? Okay. All right. Next on our agenda is number eight, is the second public hearing with possible action on Charter Amendment Number 180, a charter resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, amending Article 400 Administration of the Charter of the City of Laurel to reflect the dissolution of the Department of Community Resources and Emergency Management Crem, and the establishment of two new departments, the Department of Human Services and Emergency Management, and amending Section 469 to reflect Director of the Department of Emergency Management, and add Section 470, Director of Department of Human Services. Mayor Sidnor, you now have the floor.
I'm sorry, Madam President. I think we need to close the general public hearing first officially.
Thank you. And this is my first one in person? Let's go back. I just said my whole speech. No. All right. So, after our last speaker, I will close the public hearing on this item at 7:00 p.m. Now, just to confirm, do we need to, do I need to say it again? Okay, perfect. That's great. All right. So, now we will have Mayor Sidnor speak on agenda item number eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, this is the second public hearing of dissolving the community emergency management department, creating two new departments. One, the emergency management department, and one is the human service department. This task force started back in 2019 when I was a council member. I was on the committee to create this task force, and we identified that the winter shelter, folks were sleeping in the churches, and we know that was not right. And so, we came with this task force. Councilmember Nicholas was on the task force as well, and also Pastor Strong, who's on the task force as well, who's gonna call him up and speak on my behalf as well for this. So, we had this task force created in 2019, in May of 2019. And at the end of this task force report, June 2020, the task force presented the report to the mayor and city council. And various things they talked, they need to create this task force. We're talking about beds, male beds in the winter haven for females, male beds, excuse, male beds for males, and beds for the females. We talked about domestic violence assistance. We talked about employment assistance. We talked about access to transportation. We talked about medical assistance. We talked about referral assistance, Medicaid, services to support the LGBT community, housing, trade programs, legal aid, bathrooms and showers, veterans' liaison, and case management. All these things fall under human services. As you can see, the multi-service center is now online. It came online in September of this year, last year, and we have those services. We partnership with Prince George, employ Prince George for job readiness. We partnership with Lars for transitional housing. We partnership with Fish House for feeding our clients, and multi-other services we partnership with. So, all these things, we addressing the community needs under human services. As emergency management is a totally separate department that focuses on emergencies, disasters, weather, snow, things of that nature. So, that's why I wanted to create this separate department. There's some other reasons why as well, but I'm not gonna go into detail that, but for the public, these are the main reasons. Human services are the things I just reiterated, and these are things the task force said in 2019, that came back to report in the mayor and city council. And under my watch as a mayor, I see the vision of the multi-service center's most important building. I see under my watch, I see that I want to have firsthand knowledge on it. So, I want to create a department and put the people, the expertise in the department where they belong. Emergency management has wonderful expertise people, and they belong in that department, and human service has some people that I believe belong in that department. That's how I see it. So, I asked for the council approval tonight to make the emergency department my separate department, human service a separate department. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council to begin with? Okay. Not at this, yes. Okay.
A point of order, will we hear from the general public before the council comments, or vice versa?
Right after.
Okay.
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 Thank you. Seeing that there are no additional questions or comments from the council at this time, we will now go to the general, I'm sorry, the public hearing portion for this agenda, item number eight. As a reminder, each person has three minutes to speak. Please state your name and the street and the city for the record. I will now open the public hearing portion for agenda item number eight at 7:04 p.m. Mayor Sidnor has mentioned that former council president Valerie Nicholas will be speaking, as well as Pastor Strong. And I believe there are additional people signed up, so if you don't mind coming down or standing in the line behind them, I have on the list for agenda item number eight, Ms. Umi Modeste, Tiffany Turner Allen, Roy Smith, Ayana Castro, Norde Watson, Ms. Georgina Ifill, Dr. Renee Garraway, and Marcia, I think it, Lear? Levi, thank you. Okay. So, we'll start with Pastor Strong and former council president Valerie Nicholas.
First, five people were more than one.
Yeah. Most that supported, come together. You're against it, you can speak against it. You support it, come forward. And our councilmember Nicholas and Pastor Strong will be the spokesperson for the group that supported. Now, you have to say...
Say your name. Those interviewers say your name and your address first, and Councilmember Nicholas and Pastor Strong will speak on behalf of those in favor of creating the separate departments. So, Councilmember Nicholas, say your name first, and then Dr. Garraway, you can say your name and address, and just keep going. And then after everybody says their name and address on record, you and Pastor Strong can speak for the group.
Valerie Nicholas.
Laurel, Maryland, 20707.
Dr. Garraway, Olive Ranch Way, Laurel, Maryland.
Ayana Castro, 14214 Oak Point Drive, Laurel, Maryland.
Tiffany Turner Allen, I'm speaking or supporting as the Executive Director of the Human Services Coalition of Prince George's County, located at 1021 Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, Bowie, Maryland.
Umi Modeste, 1020 10th Street, Laurel, Maryland.
Roy Smith II, Westmead Drive, 1400 block of Westmead Drive, Laurel, Maryland.
Eileen Stokes, Northview Court, Laurel, Maryland.
Good evening. Michael Dinkins, 8000 Cherry Lane, which is Laurel High School. I'm the principal of Laurel High School, and I'm speaking, I'm in favor. Thank you.
Good evening. Dr. Marcia B. Levi, 814 Spring Arbor Drive, and Park Center Drive is where I have our businesses. 814 Spring Arbor Drive, and Park Center Drive is where I have our businesses.
Hello. I'm Nor Day, and I live at 7926 Chapel Cove Drive in Laurel, Maryland.
Hello. Tina Thomas. I'm at Flatwater Place in Laurel, in Rundle. I believe that's it.
Pastor Strong, City of Zion Church. I live at 8445 Snow Notes Place, Laurel, Maryland.
Are you for? I think you're against, right?
I'm not really against.
Okay. We're just trying to get everyone together. Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for having me here tonight. As many of you all know, I also am a hospital chaplain. I'm the hospital chaplain at Doctors Community Medical Center, and for 25 years, I have had a nonprofit called Love is Not Enough, because I'm a survivor of domestic violence. And out of that birthed my services for the homeless and people in need. So I support the establishment of the two departments. As I see firsthand, there are more, there are more people in need than there are services. I think the multi-service center is a great start. I commend that. As Keith said, that we, you know, served on the council together when that was established, but there is much more need. But I think the beginning would be the establishment of the two separate departments where direct services can be provided.
Good evening. Again, I'm Pastor Strong, and as the mayor stated, we were part of a task force, May 2019, but I sort of have a history with the homeless here in Laurel. My church, City of Zion, we used to house the homeless. We were one of those churches that allowed the men and the women to sleep in our buildings. And this sort of predates a lot of what's going on here. It's a lot of history. What we was doing, it was illegal. It was illegal. We were getting in good trouble, as John Lewis used to say, but we didn't want to see people just dying on the streets. So, yeah, we were breaking all kinds of fire codes, all kinds of safety codes. We were creating insurance liability for all of our buildings, but there was a need. We thank God that the multi-service center is up now, is up and running, and it's magnificent. It's a well-oiled machine. I was just there last week. Very successful, it's well-coordinated. So I really just want to say a word for Marcel LeBlanc. She's doing a great job. She's doing a magnificent job. Matter of fact, I'm a little biased, because she's a PK. And if you don't go to church, you don't know what that means. That's a pastor's kid. And she's a PK. She's a PK. I know her father. Matter of fact, I performed the wedding ceremony for her and her husband. And she's an outstanding individual. She has character. And during this election cycle, that's refreshing to have someone running something that has character. So, yeah, she's doing an outstanding job. She serves faithfully at our church, and I just want to, just, I strongly support this effort, strongly support this effort. Like councilwoman Nicholas has said, this is just the tip of the iceberg, and you got the right person for the job. So I just, I just want to stop by and just say a word for your effort and for Marcel LeBlanc. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, and thank you, everyone, for coming up to say your name and showing support as well. We also have two individuals that would like to speak. I believe Ms. Calandra Young, we would love to hear from you as well. And also on the list for number eight, we have Ms. Georgina Ifill after that.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Calandra Young, and I reside at 101 6th Street, Laurel, Maryland. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about charter amendment number 180, which proposes replacing the Department of Community Resources and Emergency Management with two new departments, Emergency Management and Human Services. While I understand the intent to improve service delivery, I just have a couple of questions. So I know Mayor Keith Sidnor said that I oppose it, but, you know, I'm just asking general questions. I understand the intent to improve service delivery. I have questions and concerns about the short and long-term implications of this decision. First, what are the immediate and long-term impacts of this reconstructuring? How will costs, staffing, and service delivery be affected? And what are the goals for these departments moving forward? Second, why is the change necessary now? Are there specific challenges with the current structure, and how would this amendment address them? Third, what is the budgetary impact? What are the costs of creating new leadership positions, staff, and resources? And how will the city ensure that this doesn't strain the budget or increase overhead? Finally, how has the community been involved in this process? Have residents been consulted? And how will the city ensure equitable and accessible services, especially for marginalized populations? I recognize this amendment has potential benefits like improving specialization, accountability, and expanding human services. However, there are risks, including implementation costs, potential service disruptions, and overlapping responsibilities without clear coordination. To address these concerns, I recommend, first, providing a transparent breakdown of costs, a timeline, and a transition plan. Two, hosting public forums to gather resident feedback. Three, establishing performance metrics for both departments to ensure accountability. Four, developing a coordination plan to address areas where emergency management and human services intersect. In closing, I appreciate the council's commitment to improving services for our community, and I urge you to carefully evaluate this amendment's impact on the budget, services, and long-term planning to ensure best outcomes for Laurel residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Next, we have Ms. Georgina Ifill.
Ifill, again, I reside at 8231 North Lake Court in Laurel, Maryland. And I too, like Calandra, it is not that I am against the separation, I just didn't understand the need. And I did read the resolution, there wasn't really much there. So I loved some of the things that Cali, Calandra actually proposed, because coming from the public, I mean, I'm hearing everyone that lined up and said they support it, and a lot of it had to do with providing some emergency housing, so on and so forth. That is already going on. So I don't necessarily see where the benefit is coming in. I guess I clearly did not understand or see the difference between, I guess, community resources, whatever the CR was standing for before, and this human services. And then it seemed like, you know, emergency management. Then I'm seeing that there's two directors. So again, how is this going to affect our budget? Because it clearly stated in, I think, 469 and 470 of the article, that the director of each one would be a full-time dedicated position. So that's, again, opening up a whole new department, additional costs. So I too, I'm a little bit, as a resident and taxpayer, trying to understand what are we really trying to get to? And the only thing that I saw actually in the resolution, it spoke to privacy and communication. It spoke to nothing else that I've heard here, that we're going to be able to service more people, we're going to be able to do this. None of that was kind of a part of this resolution. So I too, I'm kind of like wondering, why are we moving to do this now, when the, you know, multi-service center is already up? My understanding is housing, is already housing males, you know? And every week, I can go out there on Facebook or in some group, where it seems like y'all are always looking for volunteers, so you're still at a point where you are trying to staff up. And it is, you know, in some cases, I've seen where it can be a redundancy of what we may already have out there. And so, again, I don't want us to fall into that. So I just don't have a clear picture on, yes, everybody's saying we separated, but what is that really giving us? What are we gaining from that? And that does not seem to be clear in any fashion or form. The cost of that separation has not been identified. You know, it's very vague what you're going to services, other than, I think, one thing was mentioned here, which was, what was it? Well, like I said, I'm looking at this resolution, and it, there's not enough meat on his bones. So again, it's not that I'm not for it, it's just that I don't know enough about it to say that this is a, this is a wise expenditure for the city of Laurel at this time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ifill.
So I hope you take care of that suggestion.
I believe, Mayor Sidnor, would you like to answer a few questions?
Yeah.
Close the public hearing. You're going to close the public hearing?
Nah, nah, it's still open. It's still open. It's still open. Yeah, close out there.
That's what I...
Yeah, it's still open.
Okay. So we're going to, are we going to close first?
Nah, it's still open. Still, I'm speaking on this subject. There you can close it, there you can take off for a vote. I'm just going to address a few questions. The way this process work, we have a work session first. The work session is, we talk about that in length and detail, and so all our work sessions on YouTube TV, so you can review the work session. Then we have our first public hearing, and we talk about the same items and things of that nature, and then we have the final vote. But the department right now is made up of eight personnel. We're not increasing any personnel in the budget. So two of those individuals in emergency management, experts in emergency management, Director Cornwell, her assistant director, they would go into the emergency management department. That's two individuals. The other six individuals are three people from the Laurel Multi-Service Center, Ms. LeBlanc, who's the director, her program manager, and I think, I don't know the other noun, name of the person, there's three individuals there. And then other departments are Laurel Helping Hands, that's our youth service bureau, and those are three individuals there as well. Says a clinical supervisor, a councilor one, and administration personnel. Says no increase in personnel, no increase in the budget, whatever the budget was established for that, that budget we split. The six individuals be under the human services department, and they'll be paid the same salary they're making under the human services department according to their position. The two individuals under the emergency management would go under the emergency management, they'll be paid their current salary as a director and assistant director. They would not be in a director, assistant director for the human services department, because we have various partnerships, like I mentioned earlier. The multi-service center consists of, like I said, various partners with Lars, Floyd Prince George, Fish House, financial literacy classes. It'd be a partnership of people coming together to assist. Staff is only there to just manage the operation of the building. So every year, things could change. Right now, we're in negotiation with Dr. Yenobe. He wants to provide medical services there for the clients that come there, so that'd be an added component, you know? But those are things that we'll talk about next year, next year budget. So this is something that is my vision as the new mayor coming in, you see things, you tweak things, you see, I've been here a year now, and I see there's a need to break the department down. Like I said earlier, I'm not going to go into detail of all the reasons, some of the reasons are personnel reasons, and so therefore, I ask for the council's support on this resolution, charter amendment, to break the human services, create their own human services department, and create a department for emergency management. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for coming up to speak. We appreciate your passion. We appreciate you coming to speak with the council and for us to hear your thoughts and views. Now we are going to close the public. Does anyone else have anything to say about agenda item number eight before we move forward? Just want to make sure. Okay. We're now going to close the public hearing portion at 7:21 PM. Does the council have any additional questions or comments that they would like to make?
Yes, Madam President, if I may. Thank you. And first of all, thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening, and to me, it is a great sort of testament to see so many members of our community engaging on this really important question. I persuaded myself both ways multiple times at this point, because I see some merits on both sides of the argument. On the one hand, I think it's natural that with the addition of the multi-service center and its role in our city government, that our strategic resources be aligned to support it and to see the programs there flourish. And I know it's also a big part of the mayor's program and vision for the city, and I'd like to see that be successful. On the other hand, adding to our city's departmental account, in order to create a department for something that we created a department for two years ago, which is what the existing city resources and emergency management department was set up, not even two years ago, in order to house the multi-service center, that part is one of the things I'm sort of struggling to sort of make sense of. The other part I'm struggling with is not so much that the human services shouldn't be its own department, because I think there's a lot of really good reasons for that, but that part of this plan means that the emergency management is out on its own as a team person department, which seems a little odd to sort of have them floating out. So it's even, not really about the human services department, it's about the emergency to management. You know, previous to this, they were in an office, and under the city administrator, in my mind, it may make sense to move them back as an office, because they're a critical capability for a city to have, but maybe it's not a year-round department that we need to have a bunch of budgetary line items around. So bottom line there is, it's not to say that I don't like sort of some of the big-picture thrust of the plan, but I'm not fully persuaded in its current state that it's a complete enough plan with some of the other pieces to sort of achieve the stated objective and might benefit from a little bit additional attention. Some of my thoughts. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or questions from the council, just to double check?
Madam President, I have some comments.
Thank you.
Similar to Councilman Simmons, I have some budgetary concerns about this amendment. A charter amendment is something that the council should not take lightly. We are changing our governing documents. That's why when we pass a charter amendment, there are special rules that apply to that that is not the same as a regular ordinance. For those of you that may not be paying attention to some of the things at the state and federal level, or even at the county level, there are budget deficits that are coming that won't impact our city this year, but they will impact our city 18 months from now, 24 months from now, and I have some concerns on those. I would like to see a three- to five-year fiscal impact study. What's this going to cost us in three years, five years from now? We have assurances that there won't be any tax increases or change to the budget in fiscal year '26, but our job is to take care of the taxpayers, not just now, but in the future. So with that, I would like to look at that impact study before we make a vote on this.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
Madam President, I just call for the vote. Councilmember Coles, I addressed that for you already. I told you each year that we have a budget, and that budget is this year is no but increase. Next year, it might be increased based on the needs of any department. All these department heads right here submit a budget every year based on the need they need for the city. So I can't promise you, now you asked me for a 10-year plan, and I can't promise you a 10-year plan. I can promise you a plan each year based on the needs of each budget, because the budgets rotate every year. So I call for Madam President to please take a vote.
Thank you so much. We have one more comment that has been requested by Councilmember Mills, and then we will take the vote.
Thank you, Madam President. I strongly agree with the mayor, and I recognize that even with the budget that was approved, the numbers, if we, if these two are separated, the numbers are still the same, even if this was this year, next year, or any other year. So I strongly approve, I strongly agree with the mayor.
Thank you, everyone. As you can see, this is a passionate topic, and we appreciate everyone coming today. For agenda item number eight, if it is the council's desire to pass charter amendment number 180, I will now entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the charter amendment number 180.
Madam Clerk, I have a motion. Do I have a second? A second? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll? Please.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Clerk?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
No.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
My vote is yes, with the proviso that the mayor examines the office of emergency
Mayor Sidnor?
I concur. Thank you, counsel.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, everyone, again, for your comments and your questions. Moving to agenda item number nine is the second public hearing with possible... Moving to Agenda Item Number Nine is the second public hearing with possible action on Ordinance Number 2036, an ordinance amending the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, and providing an effective date. Director Michelle Saylor, oh, Ms. Woods, you now have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, City Council members, and Mayor Saidnor. As discussed at the January 6 work session and January 13 meeting, Ordinance 2036 is an amendment of the FY 2025 General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program to provide funding of $608,789 to purchase 7701 Sandy Spring Road and for preliminary improvements such as fencing.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Okay. If there are no additional questions, I will now open the general public hearing portion at 7:28 PM. I do see that there, Ms. Georgina Ifill is on the list. Would you like to come up and speak again, Ms. Ifill?
Ms. Ifill?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No? Okay. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this agenda item? All right. If no one wants to speak on this agenda item, I will close the general public portion at 7:29 PM. If it is that the council's desire is to pass Ordinance Number 2036, I will now entertain a motion.
Madam Clerk, or Madam President, sorry about that. This is a rare opportunity for us as a city to buy something that's adjacent to one of our existing properties. I move that we approve Ordinance Number 2036.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you please call the roll?
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Saidnor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving to Agenda Item Number 10 is the second public hearing with possible action on Resolution Number 1-2025, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to rename and expand the scope of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities. Councilmember Adrian Simmons and Councilmember Christine Johnson, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and hopefully everyone has a chance to have read their resolution. So, as the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities, last fall, we were rebooting the committee, but we also saw a need that we could expand the membership to include individuals who are connected with nonprofits or businesses or other deep ties to the city of Laurel, even if they might not be directly residents, and that we could avail the expertise on this committee when it comes to understanding the needs of and giving voice to folks with disabilities and their interaction. It's actually through that is when I first came into contact with Ms. Linda and Eric, and I was happy to be able to be part of bringing them here this evening, and I'm so glad they're with us. But that was, what this resolution does is to modify the membership to allow for that expertise to be part of the committee. And in the process, I was also approached by Councilmember Johnson to expand this committee to include senior services, and I'll let her speak to that.
Thank you. And just like you mentioned, I guess, just seeing a need within the city to help our senior citizens instead of getting building a new committee or asking people to reallocate their time to something new, just using what we already have, expand the scope and expand the needs of our community to reach those 55 and older.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons and Councilwoman Johnson, for your work on this. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council members? Seeing none, I will now open the general public portion at 7:32 PM. Are there, I did not see anyone signed up on the list. Does anyone have any comments or questions from the general public? Please. Oh. Oh, it's no problem. I believe, Dr. Noah, I've seen your name. Yes, if you come up and then, Ms. Ifill? Okay, thank you so much. Please feel free to proceed. Just as a reminder, if you could please state your name and street and city for the record. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Renee Garraway, Olive Branch Way, Laurel, Maryland. I'm excited about the possible amendment. I do have, I do have a question. I do have a child with a disability, so this is, definitely touches my heart as a resident and a parent. I'm also, you know, a licensed clinical social worker, so I do appreciate your concern for 55 and over. I'll be approaching that age at some point very soon. But I guess the only question that I have is making sure that we are still focused on individuals with disabilities as well and that it does not get overly absorbed with focusing on our seniors, because I do, as a clinical social worker, work with geriatrics as well as young people and students with disabilities. So, I just wanted to, you know, just, I guess it's a comment, but also a question, to make sure that there is equal consideration for both populations because it's very much needed. And I'm also willing to support you in your efforts.
Thank you so much for your time today. Ms. Ifill, would you like to come up next?
Georgina Ifill, 8231 North Lake. Laurel, Maryland. I am very excited to hear of the expansion. I guess the only question that I really wanted to ask, and maybe I missed this part, as far as expanding to get those outside of the city of Laurel involved, will they have an equal say on the committee? You know, I was just kind of wondering how that would, you know, is their vote weighted any differently and how that would actually work? So, was that something that was out there that I missed?
So, today, they're not answering, we're not answering questions, but we're happy to listen to your questions, concerns.
Okay, no, I just want to know because I would go back to the resolution if I missed something. That's why I'm just asking, is it something that I missed?
Right.
Not necessarily, just enough it was there.
Yeah. So, we don't have an answer at this time.
Okay.
But, you know, as always, we're always happy to follow up with you as well, just to answer any questions that you have. If you could, please reach out to Madam Clerk, and then we can provide feedback for that.
Okay.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
I'm glad to hear the expansion.
All right. Are there any additional questions or comments from the public? All right. So, we will close the public portion hearing at 7:35 PM. Are there any additional comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, we will now take a motion for Resolution Number 1-2025. I will now entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1-2025.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll, please?
I didn't hear the question.
I'm sorry. So, the second one was Councilmember Simmons. Yeah, there were two people that said it at the same time.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Saidnor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving to Agenda Item Number 11 is the second public hearing with possible action on Resolution Number 2-205, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland authorizing the purchase of 7701 Old Sandy Spring Road, Laurel, Maryland 20707, for the purpose of acquiring real property for city operations. Mayor Saidnor, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As you say, we debated this, not debated, but we presented this in the work session, and we presented it at the first public hearing, and now tonight is the second public hearing to take a vote on it. It's the city acquiring property of 7701 Old Sandy Spring Road, right next to a parking recreation facility. The city has been growing over the past 20 years or so, and we need more land to overflow for our vehicles. And so, buying this property here right next door to our Public Works Department will enhance our overflow. Vehicles from the police station can park there, vehicles from DPW can park there, along with the other vehicles we're parking recs have. So, we ask the council to approve the buying this house of $450,000. Like I said before, we discussed it in the work session, we discussed it on the first public hearing, and we ask for your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Saidnor. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? Seeing that there are none, we will open the public hearing portion at 7:37 PM. Is there anyone that has a comment or a question that they would like to bring before the council? If not, then we will close the public hearing portion at 7:37 PM. If it is the council's desire to pass Resolution Number 2-205, I will now entertain a motion.
Madam President, I'll move to approve a Resolution Number 2-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Saidnor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for your time today. There were so many people here, and I hope to see every single one of y'all at our future meetings because y'all had me a little stirred up trying to figure out how we were going to handle this, but it's a good thing. We're really glad to see you. We're so glad to hear from you, and we want to hear from you more often. So, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight, especially former Council President Valerie Nicholas, all of our EMS and Emergency Management Fire Department. We appreciate your service. We appreciate the work that you do. It's great to see everyone. Also, as everyone said, we will have our Black History event coming up on Saturday, February 8th, at our Laurel Multi-Service Center from 1 PM to 3 PM. It's like a family reunion around here, so please, you don't have to be in the city of Laurel. We welcome you to come, dance, have fun, and support our local vendors. There will be plenty of vendors there. For our upcoming events and ways that you can stay connected, please follow the city of Laurel on social media or visit cityoflaurel.org. With no further business to come before the mayor and city council, I call this meeting adjourned at 7:39 PM. Have a great night.